One officer called. There's also a stolen car.
All right, shall I give it a second to check now that I've warmed up?
My turn.
My turn. My open.
Yeah.
I'll call the lead in to order. We're going to give us a little.
Too much. You're already very lost, Mark.
I'll learn. Go ahead, call the roll.
Mr. Carter.
Here.
Mr. Dino.
Present.
Mr. Gay.
Here.
Mrs. Helfer.
Here.
Mr. Hoffman.
Here.
Mr. Oakley.
Here.
Mrs. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Stevens.
Present.
Now can we have an invitation?
Forgot my invitation. Rose, Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us all to come together for this meeting and really just want to pray that we can make some good decisions for our community. We have a lot of good things coming down the pipe, I think, and blessed in many ways. And we just pray that all goes well. In Jesus' name, pray amen.
United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
It seemed ever here.
Are there any notes or changes on the minutes? If not, I have a motion to approve the minutes. You don't need a motion to approve unless there are changes or additions and the minutes will stand. All business. Economic Development, RSP, we're not quite there yet, but I wanted to share this draft. Maybe filter one of these back to the media who have these in their boxes. So this is just a draft economic development spec that I want to put out and I want to give a special thank you to Brett Walton, who is completing this from Dubai, actually. He sent it to me this afternoon and he's been facilitating this. He's also interested in doing a little internship this summer, so I'm hoping to line that up. But this was prepared by Brett and I think it's a pretty good stamp and I don't want to take a bunch of time and go over it now, but I wanted to put it in your hands and give you that context and if you have some input on this or think something needs to change here, please bring it to my attention, okay? And I'm going to run it by Chris Chung and Missouri Partnership and Terry Maglich and Mo D E to make sure that we're on track, but I think we are. And Chris, Chris Chung and Terry Maglich both independently recommended that to put out this RFP, we join the Missouri Economic Development Council, MEDC. So the membership for that's $125 and I'd like to do that. They have a listserv that's a very effective way to put this out and it of course has other benefits that we should probably be engaging. So I would like a motion to have me go ahead and create a membership to MEDC.
I'll make a motion.
This I can do.
To discussion. Call the roll.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Mr. Dino.
Yes.
Mr. Gay.
Yes.
Mrs. Helfer.
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman.
Yes.
Mr. Oakley.
Here.
Mrs. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Hey.
Hey, thank you very much. So we're on our way with that. Status update on wholesale water rates are not as far as I'd hoped to be tonight, but I have come quite a ways. Let's see here. So I want to review some, review some facts and this is just for some context. The big question is the one that Mr. Carter worked on pretty diligently and I'm kind of working my own process to verify that cost that we really have in producing water. We produced 250 million gallons, over 250 million gallons of water in 2013 and figuring out what that cost is then will give us our, what our cost is to produce 1,000 gallons and then I've kind of interpreted everything else in the, by a thousand gallon unit so that we can compare apples to apples easily. And I am going to, I have a document started that I'm going to distribute as soon as I have those two values figured out. I have a meeting with Christina to basically, it's real easy to take the water supply and that's all direct cost, but the water distribution and the water office costs are trickier because some of those line items are really for sewer and for water and some things that are in there are also where some things are water. So we're going through the line items and I think the most effective way is to just simply sit down with Christine and come to a percentage, you know, estimate of what that line item is really going for one way or the other. And I have the spreadsheet all built, so we're going to fill in those percentages and it'll automatically calculate on our budget sheet that which is, you know, that tool is continuing to evolve so that we'll have a much better budget tool for the mid-year budget and this is a part of that. So that we'll put those numbers in and then we'll automatically have a cost as a part of our budgeting process to be able to see these numbers. So I'm in the process with that and Christina and I will meet on Wednesday to get those numbers. Just some other notes to revisit this. The wholesale water rate, having industrial water users, that's a rate based on 24 month average, being over 1.1 million gallons basically and that's at $2.80 per 1,000 gallons. Pike County Water Supply District used 27 million gallons, 27.8 million gallons of water last year, so that's $2.3 million monthly on average and they're getting billed that rate of $2.80. I bring that up because Stark Brothers used 16.5 million gallons, so if you want to, if you're trying to figure out in mind where those two wholesale rates are, Stark Brothers is 16.5 and Pike County Water Supply is 27.8, they're both being billed $2.80 effectively through two different mechanisms. If you want to compare the rates, you know, we've got A through I here and we're H, we're the second to lowest on the rate scale for, yeah.
One thing I just wanted to point out, just so everyone's on the same page, Pike County Water District is a public entity and Stark Brothers is a private entity. I just want that clarification.
Yeah, one more.
Because, because, you know, if we're talking about wholesale rates, I don't think anyone would argue that wholesaling rates to a public entity.
I would talk more about Stark's because we did have a meeting with them. We have not had a meeting with Pike County Water Supply. I'll get to that in a minute, but I just wanted to, before we do that, the comparative rates, Winfield, which really does not have a wholesale rate, winds up calculating at $310 per 1,000 gallons if you actually bought a million gallons worth. They don't have to worry about that. So that's a little, that's just an oddity of the way that they calculate stuff. Curryville's $11.50, Bowling Green's $10, Clarksville's $9.76, Chavina's $6.35, Clarence Canyon slides in there at $4.62, Hannibal's $4.37, we're $2.80, so pretty low, and Macon actually comes in lower at $2.48. So you can kind of see where we are in that spectrum. So I have some notes here on Sunny and I's meeting with Mary, this is a very difficult name to say, CZA is an ass, right?
Yes.
So Sepeska is the way you say it.
Pretty close.
Sepeska, okay. She's the CFO at Stark Brothers and was very pleasant and listened and seemed open-minded and pretty detail oriented. So I'd say it was a good meeting. Sunny, do you like to read my notes, but if I would let you give a report if you like?
Well, I think the meeting was very worthwhile. Did we get a concrete answer? No. We put our cards on the table and Mary put some of Stark's cards on the table and she's, she was very receptive to listening to us. She didn't agree to anything, but she did agree to take it to her bosses and do some other research on some things they have in the works and she would get back with us prior to our July committee meeting with their answer or their solutions, suggestions. So I'd say we didn't get a concrete commitment, but I think the meeting went well and it was very worthwhile to open a line of communication.
I, I agree and that's a good summary. We, we explained our situation. We indicated that we wanted to have plenty of notice and be invited to be at the table and be a part of the solution. We were very clear about that. We indicated that there was an interest in an incremental move to whatever the new rate would be, so it wouldn't be just something out of the blue all at once. We, I indicated that we would like to remain Stark Brothers best solution for their water needs, that that's our goal. So if they have something else in mind, we'd like to know what that is out of place out so we can maybe produce a better offer for them, but we need to have that information in order to do it. We asked specifically for their inputs. We offered to meet with owners if they would like it. And then we set that deadline to put you back for the July committee meeting. And so now I'm in the process of trying to give us a meeting scheduled for Pike County Water Supply to kind of have that same conversation and we'll see where that goes. But that's where we are with the wholesale water rates and if there's any more information or conversation on that at this time from council, it's proceeding. Okay. We'll move on. 314 Georgia, I just want to be very transparent and clear. I want to make sure that I'm doing it correctly administratively and in terms of the policy and direction of council, I'd like to, I gave a memo on the 13th when we realized that there's no longer a building permit in place there, so we looked in the books, this is what we do and we followed what that determined. So I kind of have some statements here to describe where I am with it, but then I would like to have council input if there's something here that I had to modify in terms of the way I'm approaching this. First, I do not believe the building permit, which expired in March, was correctly issued. I believe that we, we did not do that well. Primarily, there should have been an engineer's drawings required at that time in this case. There may have been other feelings of the city regarding the sale of Billy from the French Hen LLC to Douglas Dempsey. I don't know. Tim brought up some, some information that indicated that maybe we should have enrolled in allowing that sale or, and nothing, nothing happened to the private sale and we did not involve ourselves. But I believe that knowingly allowing the project to continue without an engineer's input puts the city in risk. And I think that the correct thing to do is to have an engineer's input and whatever it takes to get that done and know what the correct solution is. I believe, given the original engineer's report after the Crow's building collapsed, which was in June of 2010, and the current state of the structure, that time is of the essence. This is not something that we can continue to just wait on forever. We just don't have that luxury. As represented by the creation of our historic district, Louisiana's historic building stock is a significant cultural and economic asset to the city as a whole. This structure represents a critical piece of that asset. It's not just a standalone situation. Out in some places, a part of the system that has cultural, historical, economic value to our city. I believe that this building represents an integral structural piece of the neighboring buildings, just like the two buildings west of it which collapsed in succession and did not be dealt with in time or manner, right? There's a times of essence here. I believe the most responsible course is to proceed by reissuing a building permit correctly. That means we have an engineer's assessment. I don't even care really if we have drawings, but I want a letter from an engineer that says the design, the solution is, is a reasonable one. And I believe that we need a timeframe in place because it is a dangerous building. It's not something that we can just let sit there. So it may, the administration proceeded per our understanding of the current policies hold a hearing with the owner. The purpose of this meeting was to address a plan. Given that this dangerous building has not been brought into compliance, there's no longer a permit in place and the building inspector feels that good faith progress has not been made. The owner did not attend the meeting. So my recommended course of action on this dangerous building is that the building commissioner, which is Bob Jimmy, will give an order compelling the owner to bring the building into compliance within 90 days. Only 30 days is mandated by our code, but I want to be generous in the things that we do to the best of our ability when we need to move this thing forward. Should the building not be brought into compliance within this space by time, I will come back to the mayor, or to the city council to authorize hiring a time tracker to complete the required repairs at the owner's expense. Failure to pay those costs will result in leaving this property. That's, that course of action is what's described in our, in our main building maintenance code. So that's what I'm operating on. But if, if I'm in error here, this is not representing the way that the council would like to pursue this situation, then I need to know about it and the public needs to know about it because I want to be clear, clear. I want to represent the public interest. I want to, if we've done something wrong, I want to fix it. I don't want to proceed wrongly just because we started wrongly. I want to take corrective action and I don't want to lose the rest of that block of Georgia Street and I don't want to kick the problem down to the next building owner. I want it to stop on our dime if it has to. I want it to stop on our clock, you know, now because we can't keep losing buildings to the dollars. So I'm, interested.
I agree with most of what you said and this is kind of picky, picky, but early in your remarks, you stated that the building permit was issued incorrectly. We did not have the engineer's drawings. Later on, you said you didn't care about that as long as you got the engineer's letter. I think if you're going to just have the engineer's letter, let's don't say we issued it wrong because we didn't have drawings and then we're not going to require drawings down the road. Let's get both of those on the same page.
Let me clarify because I think I am on the same page and I may semantically introduce confusion. The requirements were engineer's drawings and that's what we should do is require engineer's drawings. Engineering drawings may cost more than a letter from an engineer. I'm interested in reducing the burden on, or on whoever has to do this. I want to be accommodated and I want to make sure we have some sort of assurance that tells us that the structural solution, I have no idea what kind of vertical steel is going into that wall. I have no idea what kind of steel is in the, in the foot. I don't know if the building inspector does. I don't have the calculations to know if a CMU wall that tall is correctly calculated with, with, for the lateral loads will be put on it with the steel that's going in it. I don't know if any steel is going in there. I don't know how it's being tied back into the main structure. You can't tie a wall like that just into soft brick and hope that it stands. So, you know, I, I need a, I want some input from a professional structural engineer that says that what we're doing is appropriate. Normally that would be drawings, but I'm trying to also be sensitive to costs and that we've started down this road. What I really want is assurance that what we're doing is the correct thing and it may be. I just want that assurance.
If there was never an engineer or an architect drawing submitted for a permit, was there ever a plan? I mean, was the, was the permit just issued to, to Mr. Dempsey and said, here, go work on your building?
That's pretty much my understanding. There was not a professional set of drawings issued to the city. Is that correct?
Do you have an explanation of how that happened?
It was an administrative decision.
Is that your explanation? I mean, was it an oversight or an agreement between two gentlemen or you don't have a clue?
I wasn't in the administration at that time that I did make that decision.
Right. So the only reason I ask because you are now. I have some hindsight into what happened because this, you know, this is kind of remote. Now, most, I can understand your concern, but most permits are renewed after six months, aren't they?
Yes, sir.
In a normal environment, this is a dangerous building. Time is of the essence. There's lots of reasons why that may not be the case in this particular.
Right. So in this case, since there is no plan, then actually then in essence, the permit was revoked or not renewed. It didn't run out really.
Well, it did run out and there's some debate about that too, but on the permit it has an expiration and I'd take that to court for the city and say.
I can understand and agree with your concern for the building because if the building's not done properly, it could still fall down. We have no assurance that, that what Mr. Dempsey's doing, that the building's going to stand after it's done.
And that's what I'm after. That's really what I'm after, a timeframe and a professional assurance. So the only way I know to pursue that is to correctly give any renewed permit, make sure that we're meeting the standard for that.
Was there ever?
It should have been the engineer drawings.
Was there ever any time passed where an engineer was consulted with the previous owner?
Yes.
And give him some guidelines or can we use those? If we can obtain them?
I had at least one and I believe two engineer solutions for this project that we've given to French Hen and I have copies of those and I'd be glad to share them in fact that they're part of the record.
Can you compare those with what's being done and what the plan is? I'm sure Mr. Dempsey has the plan. I hope he does. I mean, can you, can you get somebody to compare those?
Sure. And if he would, if he would like to do that, I'd be, be very interested if he can.
Other of the suggestion is to have somebody to compare those and if that's authorized to make that decision and then, you know, he could proceed with his job. I don't think the present sound like the permit is an issue. If the permit could be renewed, we could come to a plan that could be approved.
What I would ideally like to see happen is to facilitate finishing of that building and a successful project in a way that is correct with our permitting process. I mean, we have an engineer's statement at least and probably drawings, a plan that's reasonable, we can have confidence in, and a timeframe to solve the dangerous building part. That's what I want and I would work very hard to get that to happen. So the only way I need to engage the conversation is by going through the steps that are described in the maintenance code and that's what we've done, but we did not get participation at the hearing, so that takes us to an unpleasant level of issuing an order on those to bring it into place.
All right. I agree with the points. We have a little need to be recurrent in how we go about this. We have several city codes and adopted ordinances through the building codes and I've already shared my thoughts with you, so I'll go over everyone with those thoughts. The big thing, the key points, everyone in here does not like the idea of administration telling any individual how to do their job, list expectations, but not how to do their jobs. We'd be messed up as a city. But there's nothing, and the city attorney can chime in here, but there's nothing in the city code or the building ordinance, adopted codes, that requires engineer's drawing. It's the authority having jurisdiction, the requirements that they set forth. Should they have us? Yes. Everyone here says yes, but they didn't. That puts us in a particular situation here because we also have in our adopted codes in section 163.2 under the building code, previous approvals. I shared this with you. All right. A lawfully permit was issued and it was obtained and the requirements were met for that approval. Everyone here knows that's not really what was needed, but that's what was given. There's also in the city code and the adopted code expiration dates. We've talked about this, 180 days that it's abandoned, it expires. The six month, what was written on the permit was arbitrarily put in. Past practices to do six months and to automatically renew the permits. Whether that is right or wrong, that's what the practice was, but according to the adopted code, the permit's good for a year. It only becomes invalid if it's abandoned for 180 days. And the last thing is to sell the property. Currently, we do code compliance inspections of every real estate transaction that is done in the city. People pay $25 fee to the building inspector's office to conduct this. This was a private sale, quick claims deed didn't go through the proper procedures to have the buyer sign off on an authorized letter accepting full responsibility of a building being dangerous. So that's not only in our adopted codes, but that's also in the city ordinance as well. So what we did as a council here to pursue this, I think everyone has good intentions. There's no easy solution to this. I don't like to see this thing prolonged. City don't have funds to throw at this thing without getting into our reserves. I would offer a suggestion. If the issue, if the issue is an engineering thing, let's offer to have it done to make sure that it's done right and offer that up and, and provide that.
I would be very satisfied with that.
So basically you agree with what I said? Basically you disagree with everything you said?
As far as doing that, the only thing I'm throwing in is I'm offering the city to do that. I would suggest that you do that.
Your suggestion course of action would be that we offer to pay for the engineering requirement so that we can reissue this code. And I would be satisfied with that meeting, reading the code. I think that that would be a reasonable thing for us to do since the first time around we didn't do it right.
Because I'm, I'm not an attorney, but what I've reviewed and what that, I don't want to see this go to court for anything. Time is of an essence.
I don't want to see the building fall down. That's what I don't want to see.
We got another building on the other opposite corner, 401 Georgia, that, that's a big issue.
If you have previous architect drawings, if you said you have access to.
I don't have previous architect's drawings. What I have is our contractors that have bid a solution and I'm not even sure that I have an engineer's statement in there. I know I have documents that reflect an engineered solution, so I would have to go back and look at those. I should have been clear when you asked.
I have one question. March, the building was, yeah, expired?
That's.
Prior to March?
That's the administration's point of view.
Okay.
I'm just expressed an alternate point of view.
Okay. So prior to March, was there industrious work going on on that building?
I asked the building if he felt the work had continued in good faith and the answer was no.
So even, even when he had, or the owner had a valid building permit, there was not progress being made? Is that what I understand?
There, there was very, very minimal. There, there was very, very minimal progress being made, and, and I would defer to the building inspector's assessment of the progress.
The, the last pictures I took and records I had of any work being done on the building was in September. All right? The next time the building was worked on, I took pictures, April the twenty-ninth.
Of this year's?
Yes.
So, after the building's on, it had expired?
Yes.
You were working on the building?
What improvement was made?
Pardon me?
What improvement was made?
He put up a dozen concrete blocks and stuff.
Here's, here's a problem I got with, and it's nothing against Kent personally. And there's a lot of personality conflicts involved, a lot. But just like the YMCA's building that pulled out here, before the footings pulled, what happens? An inspection. Before any walls are put up or electrics put in, an inspection throughout the whole process. I'm not sure, Kent, and I don't mean to throw you on the spot, but I don't know, and you can answer, you know, how often did you set foot on the property, did you get up and inspection during any of this work going on? Because I'm, I'm personally aware of the work going on. I'm personally aware of working on inside the basement, on the foundation of the wall and stuff. So, my thought is, you know, if we're basing it off what we're seeing from a street view, you know, just, just be mindful of, of that, because there's a lot of it that's hidden, you know, that you wouldn't see.
So, I, I mean, this is an opportunity to ask some input. I, I haven't heard anything that steers me differently other than that I, I also would be willing to shoulder some of the, um, responsibility for, uh, for the engineering costs because in, in light of the fact that we should have required that to begin with, and, and I would rather err in a generous position with our citizens and someone trying to do something than, than not. But other than that, uh, my course would be to follow the maintenance code, which, as I understand it, would be where building inspector give a letter of compelling to finish the project. Uh, I am-
Well, another thing with the engineering study would give you, uh, grounds to even call a dangerous building.
Well, we already have that engineer's statement. They'll determine that in twenty ten.
But it's not like it was in twenty ten.
No, it's not better. I mean, I could tell you that professionally, that it's not better.
It just seems to me that we've gotten to the point that we're at right now because our code wasn't followed, law wasn't followed. So, personally, my opinion is, is that from now forward, that we follow the letter of the law and do what we're supposed to do.
I agree. I agree.
And that's all I-
Um, there is an issue that, that, there's a question of whether or not we can use private, public funds to benefit private use. Absolutely. In this case, we can correct an administrative mistake, and if there is a need for non-compliance, we can, um, issue or remit against that with, with the conditions by which we might, um, try to solve this problem. So, I can reach out to, um, the owner's lawyer and offer to discuss sharing the cost of engineering prior to having the building commissioner give this order. Does that seem like a, is it a consensus of that course of action? It's really an administrative decision, opening that decision up to, to make sure I'm a good citizen.
Just one thing, um, I'm, I'm not against Mr. Dempsey in any way. I've known him for many, many years. But if we have an engineering recommendation, engineering drawings, whatever we obtain, suppose that they don't meet his scope of things, you know, then where are we? You know, if, if they say you have to do this, and he's, I don't want to do that. I'd rather do this over here. We could just be butting heads.
Like, that's generally why we ask, we would have the property owner put in a set of drawings. And we're just talking about getting, um, I mean, we don't have to go get the engineer's drawings, right? The property owners. We're offering maybe to shoulder some of the cost. So, if he can't find an engineer that agrees with this plan, that's probably for good reason, and we, we don't have the plan. If he does, then all better.
It also needs to be remembered that he has to meet the Department of Interiors and-
Actually, on this one, I don't believe that he does because it's a dangerous building. Once it was, once it was declared a dangerous building, it set itself outside of the preservation ordinance as far as this fix, uh, is concerned. Normally, it would, absolutely, but in this particular case, uh, it doesn't. And that's, of course, because we recognize that there's an imminent danger by leaving this on his office.
Mr. Denny and Mr. Adams both have cited their application. I just wonder if either one of those have the appropriate credentials to, to get that?
No.
Nope.
Professional engineering is a, it's a license, it's a licensed profession.
Well, Mayor, if, if, if you're saying this is a dangerous building and our-
I'm, I'm not-
Our building inspector is, and, you know, we're saying it is right now, then like Lori said, we need to follow the letter of the law. I think it needs to be identified, condemned, dangerous, eradicated, and excluded from any public access. That's in our code.
Okay. Um, I'd be glad, I'd be glad to review that. I'm not entirely certain that that is towards a constructive solution.
Well, this is a liability that we are assuming.
And now, is that what we're concerned with? I, I'm concerned with getting assurance that the solution that is being pursued is correct and facilitating to the best of our ability a responsive solution.
I understand that public safety is my concern.
Sure.
I mean, if we're saying it's a dangerous building, this is a potential collapsed structure, and we're sticking with our engineer drawings from two thousand and ten administratively, then we may cover the city's backside.
I'd like to make a motion that the council give the mayor, get party, negotiate with Mr. Dempsey's lawyer. Think you can come to an agreement, not on finishing the project, but how much this would cost the city for their part of hiring an engineer and getting the building done and completed.
So, to negotiate for, uh-
The settlement.
For a solution to get the, to meet engineering requirement.
Yes, just with the engineer requirement and for the cost of the engineer, not for the building or-
Are you author, is your motion to authorize the, that cost or to negotiate to determine what that cost is?
Right.
So, to negotiate what the cost is?
Yeah, talk to the attorney to negotiate the price of the engineer.
You have a motion, hold on a second.
I just want to negotiate the price.
If I want a second, my motion.
So, where does that leave me?
I don't, uh, I don't see a need to make up, to, to approve that. I mean, just let, just let you do your job and just-
I can go do it. Not a motion.
I don't think we need approval to do that.
I can agree with that. Then that will be my course. Any other discussion on this?
Right now, you're authorized up to three thousand dollars anyway, right?
Do what?
You're authorized for three thousand dollars anyway, right?
I am.
Open meeting to visitors. Uh, and that suite is not available to attend tonight. She will be here next month. Uh, is Chris Penns here?
Wow, I'm really glad to come up with something light and fun after all that. Well, first of all, thanks for letting me come and talk to you guys tonight. Uh, there's just a couple of things I want to talk to you about the, about the chamber commerce stuff, things we have coming up, and then kind of switch over some visitors and convention bureau stuff. Uh, the first two things on the list, uh, just kind of a courtesy for you guys. Um, I was told that it's already in the, in the city's, I don't know if it's necessarily ordinance or what, but, uh, we have our street collections coming up on, uh, June twentieth and twenty-first with Fourth of July events, so just wanted to make you guys aware of that. Um, and then also for, uh, just a courtesy, the citywide yard sale that we're gonna be having again this year will be on August second. So, mark your calendars for that. Um, now, some stuff that I do need permission on, and would like, uh, some help from the city council on for the chamber commerce stuff. Uh, the use of the riverfront park for Fourth of July events is coming up, obviously, on July fourth. Uh, we're looking at closing down the street around three o'clock in the afternoon on Friday, uh, July fourth, with vendors opening at five o'clock, and, uh, getting with Mr. Denny and Chief Hughes on, uh, coordination for that. So, that is something that I would like, uh, to get some approval from the city council.
I have a question. Will allow the Chamber of Commerce to use the riverfront and close the streets at three that afternoon?
Yes.
That's excellent.
Please call the rule.
Yay.
Yes.
Mr. Gay?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellke?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Steen?
Hey. All right. Uh, now, also on that same note, while I'm here, I want to go ahead and, uh, knock this out too. Our thirtieth annual Country Color Fest is coming up October eighteenth and nineteenth this year. Um, as I mentioned, it's the thirtieth annual, and just get preliminary approval from the city council to host that. I want to skin work with Mr. Denny and Mr. Chief Hughes on that.
There's, there's one thing, uh, question I want to ask.
Sure.
Um, I know practice for the Color Fest, uh, city has, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, covered all the electric cost of all the meters along, uh, all the vendors that use and cover it. Is that, is that correct statement?
Yeah.
Okay. I do have a concern about that spending, you know, I don't know what we're talking about dollar-wise. I mean, if it's minimal, it's one thing, if it's, you know-
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and interject here. Um, I'm gonna come back with the argument that as much money as that, that, uh, event brings to the city on the weekend, I think that it's probably worthwhile keeping the electric situation.
Does all the vendors, and I don't, I'm not knocking it.
Right.
I'm just trying to be open and clear here. Does any of the vendors submit any type of sales tax reports to the city? Do they get any type of permit? Any of that, you know?
The fest takes a whole fair amount.
So, what, what is, what does it generate as far as sales tax for the city?
Uh, I'd have to refer to Sharon on that. I mean, we do see a bump-
We don't know.
We do see a bump in our October totals. I can tell you from the visitors and convention bureau standpoint that the third quarter is our best quarter for hotel motel tax, which has contributed to, uh, the Color Fest.
Because they have to sign something for the chamber saying they'll report the sales tax.
Yes.
We don't-
The city issues no permits.
I'm moving to follow Chris's recommendation to focus.
One second.
Discussion. Let's call the rule.
Mr. Carter?
Yeah.
Mr. Dunnell?
Yes.
Mr. Gay?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellke?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Oakley?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay. Thank you guys very much. One last thing, uh, and this is going over the visitors and convention bureau. Uh, as I'm sure most of the councils are aware, we have a signs located on Highway sixty-one near the Highway fifty-four exit that say Historic Downtown Louisiana. These signs were put into place over five years ago with the goal being to have drivers along sixty-one recognize that Louisiana is a destination and not just another town. When the signs were first installed, business owners in Louisiana recognized that these signs could also increase traffic to their business, so a partnership between the local businesses and Louisiana Visitors and Convention Bureau was formed to help pay for the signage. Businesses paid a hundred dollars per year for five years with LBCD covering the remainder of the cost each year. The total cost of the signs per year was seventeen hundred dollars. This past year, a partnership agreement with the individual businesses concluded, so LBCD covered the total cost of this year's bill. I come to the council this evening to discuss the possibility of the city assisting in the cost of this yearly expense that not only benefits the visitors and convention bureau, but also benefits local business and brings outside tax dollars into the city. Obviously, you know that money is a little tight, so what I would like to propose is a match, is match funding. For every business that is a signage partner, the city does the one-on-one match, up to eight hundred dollars per year for the next five years. With this, I know it will help in continuing Louisiana Visitors and Convention Bureau and the council's goal in continuing to grow the city. And I don't know, Mayor, I talked with Mayor Deener about this. I don't know if you'd like to add anything to it.
Well, I just, I think the signage is very important. Uh, I think it's gonna be even more important over the next few years. Uh, and I've been on LBCD and know that they're excellent stewards of the funds that they have, and they're, they give careful consideration to their expenses. Uh, and if they're asking for help, I think it's definitely something they should consider. We're talking about eight hundred dollars, uh, to facilitate a matching grant, which is LBCD to, not just giving it away, we're empowering them to go, you know, say, look, you're a hundred dollars for the business, it'll be matched by the city, turn it into two hundred dollars. So, it's a motivating way to engage, and I would recommend that we, we go ahead and do this. Uh, I think that's a good pursuit. Council's play.
I make a motion that we, uh, approve the one-to-one match of eight hundred dollars.
One second.
Discussion?
Were we pulling this out of the line?
Good question. Where do you want us to?
I didn't make a motion, not with me.
We have a lot of excess anywhere. Is there a spot that would be better than others?
I think we can find an appropriate line item. I think we're gonna have a potential deficit on that line item.
Long as we're marking it, as long as we don't want it.
So, I don't think I need to, in motion, identify a line item. You do that indiscriminately, but I do think we're, we're not talking about money we have in the budget. We're talking about something beyond that. So, is a motion in a second? Any further discussion? Let's
call the rule.
Mr. Carter?
No.
Mr. Dunnell?
Yes.
Mr. Gay?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellke?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Oakley?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay. That's all I got. Thanks a lot.